Hey Beatrice, how you doing? I will be passing out hugs to all of you later, just wait your turn. Good afternoon, everyone, thank you for joining us today. We introduced two ordinances that will help support small businesses and development in our communities. First, the Department of Business Affairs and Consumer Protections Outdoor Patio Zoning Ordinance for breweries seeks to establish a licensing framework for outdoor patios, helping dozens of breweries in Chicago. Residents and visitors alike love outdoor dining, particularly love it in Chicago, and restaurant owners love the ability to expand their space. And so this ordinance builds upon the success of our outdoor dining program, expanded earlier this year by allowing the breweries that successfully participated in outdoor dining to apply for and maintain those outdoor patio licenses going forward. This ordinance is a no-brainer because it's not only supported by businesses, it's supported by consumers as well. So I look forward to the passage of this ordinance, enabling breweries and restaurants to expand and continue to bring vibrancy to all of our neighborhoods. Today, we also introduced the Department of Planning and Development's Type 1 Permit Expediting Ordinance. The proposed changes to this ordinance will provide relief for small businesses who face hurdles in the zoning process, reducing the time it takes for the zoning and approval process by approximately four months. It will also eliminate the Zoning Board of Appeals Variation Application Fee, as well as the Administrative Adjustment Application Fee, changes that will help business owners get started quickly and with less fees and hopefully with less stress. My office will continue working with DPD and BACP to ensure that Chicagoans and families are able to realize their dreams of owning a small business. And we will ensure that there's equitable development and economic vitality throughout all of our 77 communities. Also, in today's city council meeting, we adopted two resolutions. The first resolution honors the National Native American Heritage Month and reaffirms our city's land acknowledgement. Today and every day, the City of Chicago recognizes that our city is the traditional homeland for many indigenous cultures and that we will not simply just celebrate their existence today, but we will make sure that we celebrate their culture within the greatest city of the world. The foundation of our city was laid by, many of you all know this, Kitty Hawa of the Potawatomi. And today, we are home of the largest indigenous communities in the entire United States. These are people and are part of a culture that have built and shaped and has enhanced our great city. So with today's resolution, we recognize and honor these pioneers and for their contributions in the past and, of course, the contributions today. Our second resolution today honors our veterans, recognizing the extraordinary service and sacrifice that members of the United States Armed Forces make. Throughout the history of our city, brave Chicagoans have served with honor and distinction in conflicts all over the world to defend our freedom and our way of life. Our Veterans Day and through this resolution, we say thank you for their dedication, sacrifice, and heroism. To all the veterans in Chicago, thank you for your remarkable service. We will honor you this upcoming Veterans Day, and we will continue to ensure that our community is cared for throughout our entire city. And with that, I'm happy to take your questions.
Mayor Mariano Hillis with the Division of Chicago. It seems like the purchasing of the lot on Halsted on 115th is being delayed. It's not going to happen in the short term. I was wondering what's the city going to do with the people sleeping in the street with this cold weather in the meantime?
Well, as you know, and thank you for raising that question, it's a good one. You know, that this crisis that we have inherited, one that is obviously tremendously impacted throughout our entire globe. As I've said repeatedly, the international and the failure of foreign policy has caused tremendous upheaval and disruption in places like Central and South America. And the sanctions, of course, that have been placed on the Venezuelan government has made that government very difficult to actually carry out its business. And as a result, there are those who are seeking asylum, not just here in the United States, but in Mexico as well. And they're dealing with the crisis as well. And so what I've said before, and many of you are part of these conversations two months ago now, that I'm working every single day to create spaces, to move people out of police stations, and of course, doing it in a way that is dignified. And so we're going to continue to assess sites all over the city of Chicago to ensure that we move people out of police stations and off of the streets of the city of Chicago. And we're doing that simultaneously, making investments for those who are currently unhoused. As you know, bringing Chicago home is something that I campaigned on, and I've made a campaign commitment and a promise, and holding to that promise to make sure that we are supporting those families who are unhoused today. So we're going to continue to assess, but we're also going to continue to challenge the federal government, along with the state government, to do its part to ensure that sanctuary is not just maintained, but also those who are seeking asylum, which you know is a difference between the sanctuary status and the international law in which these individuals are protected by. So we're going to continue to find smart solutions to do just that.
Sorry, I was taken back by my new nickname.
Congratulations, that's an upgrade.
I don't know if I take it, I don't accept.
Okay.
So my understanding, there's negotiations happening right now on the paid leave ordinance that was held in committee on Monday. You introduced a sort of compromise measure yesterday into the negotiations. My understanding is the business community is coming back with a counteroffer today. I mean, how confident are you that this is going to get to a compromise? And if it doesn't, are you worried about essentially, you know, lowering the benefits for workers without the accompanying buy-in from the business community to support it?
Yeah, thank you for that question, it's also a good one. You all on a roll today. Look, there's no secret of who I am and my values. Standing up for working people is what I do, it's what I've done throughout my entire tenure of the course of these short five months. What I also said was, is that I'm going to bring people together. I made a commitment to doing that, and I've held on to every single promise that I've made. And so the business community is at the table because I want to hear from them. As far as being able to provide a type of collaborative support that the people of Chicago elected me to do, absolutely, I'm confident that, as I've demonstrated thus far, I can bring people together and we can come to a compromise. Here's the other thing, too. Running on my values and governing on my values is what I said I would do and I'm doing, and that I don't negotiate my values. But I said we can negotiate the details around our values. So that's what we're doing. That's what the people of Chicago want. We call that democracy, and I'm happy to lead the greatest city in the world through a collaborative approach. Thank you for that question.
Hi Mayor, Sabrina from Channel 2, nice to see you again.
It is.
Speaking of space for asylum seekers, there's been some confusion surrounding the former Museum for Broadcast Communications. Is that a space that's being looked into for migrant shelter or migrant housing?
There has been some confusion. Everything that I've said, I've met. And so if you haven't heard it from me, then you don't have to be confused about it.
But is that a space considered? Or are you planning on putting people there?
What I've said repeatedly is that we're looking for locations throughout the entire city. And when we put forth an idea or particular location in a space, nothing we do is done surreptitiously. So we do it out loud.
Mayor, good afternoon. Can you speak to an AP report this afternoon that there are five mayors, including yourself, Houston, Denver, New York, Los Angeles, asking President Biden for a little bit more of an acute reaction to the number of migrants coming to these five cities? Can you speak about that?
I can. Can I offer a friendly amendment? It's not a little, it's a lot. From day one, I've said that the federal government has to do more. And we're bringing people together, not just in the city of Chicago, but around the country. Look, we can be unwavering in our approach to how we provide dignity for those who are seeking asylum. We can be unified in that approach, but it has been articulated, there are almost 30,000 Ukrainians here, and no one even noticed. In fact, there was no debate about it. So the question is, what's the difference here? Now that's a question that I'm posing to you all, right? Consider it a classroom assignment. Tomorrow, I'm going to be in DC in solidarity with these mayors, as we've had multiple conversations over the course of my short five months in office. And we're going to push the federal government, just like we're going to push the state of Illinois, to do its part. Look, Chicago is leaning in. We have borne the brunt of the responsibility here. That's not an equitable distribution of how government should cooperate. And so we're providing a framework in how we can do that, just like the full force of government was in full effect to support Ukrainians, just like the full force of government is on display here in Chicago. We are a model example for the rest of the world, and we'll take that message to DC.
Hey Mayor, this morning, a group of, a coalition of West Town neighborhood groups held a press conference regarding the surge of robberies in their neighborhood. They want to meet with you, they want you and the superintendent of police to come down and meet with them and outline your plan to combat robberies. Will you meet with them this month? And what would you say to them about the ongoing plan?
Well, look, if anyone knows my schedule better than my wife, it's you all. I'm meeting with people constantly. And look, as I've said before, we've inherited, you know, a dynamic that unfortunately has been ignored for a very long time in this city. And so now you're seeing the manifestation of the type of terror that the people of Chicago have had to endure. Now, as much as we appreciate and celebrate the work that we've done to lower yet another month where we have reduced the amount of homicides and shootings, it's two months in a row, we consider to see a decline in shootings as well as homicides, we're going to continue to make sure the full force of government is available every single day for the people of Chicago. And as far as robberies and carjackings, look, there's work to be done there. And we're going to continue to work with the police department and the full force of government to address this dynamic, just like we're addressing every single other dynamic in the city of Chicago. So, you know, meeting with people, I'm an organizer, that's not a heavy lift, thank you.
Hi Mayor, so you just said you'll be in DC tomorrow, does this mean you won't be at the special city council meeting scheduled for 10:30? And will you be encouraging alderpeople to show up to that special city council meeting?
Well, I certainly don't have to tell people to show up for work, right? I mean, that's...
Right, but I mean...
I appreciate that question, but I, people know they have a job to do, right? As far as where I'm going to be, I'm going to be in DC tomorrow.
Okay, and I mean, what do you think about Alderman Beal saying he's going to reintroduce the proposal to ask about, asking the voters if Chicago should remain a sanctuary city?
You want to know what I think about...
I mean, I know what you think about it, but...
Oh, no, 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 I just want to make sure I understand. So you want me to tell you what I think about an alderperson introducing something?
Reintroducing something.
Reintroducing something. You know, alders introduce stuff all the time. The question is, what's the goal? That's the question. People do stuff all the time. We want to understand what the objective is. Because if the objective is to deal with the crises, which of course are those who are seeking asylum, then it's not a question of whether or not should we be sanctuary. The question then, if the concern about asylum seekers, the question should be, how do we influence international policy? And how do we make sure that sanctions that have been propagated against the entire nation for decades, that how do we address that? Now, look, our city has been through this before. I've shared my personal story, my personal journey. My father has the benefit of being a part of the second migration. If you all remember during the first and second migration, black folks were met with a very visceral anti-black response. But yet, here we be. I'm confident that as a city, we will get to the other side of this conversation. And this is why I have not stopped governing. Treatment of trauma. Bring Chicago home. Making sure that we are creating a pathway to open up mental health clinics. Investing a quarter of a billion dollars into homelessness. And doing all of that without raising property taxes. Who would have thought, a year ago, when I announced October 27th, that the civic committee would say, "Well done, Mr. Mayor, Brandon Johnson." Who would have thought that Brandon Johnson would have been mayor? I know there were some that had doubts, but yet here I be. So those who are suffering through a lack of confidence in the will of the people, there's too much of a track record. Because the story of Byron Segcho Lopez, Guatemala?
Ecuador.
Ecuador? Delia Ramirez, Guatemala? Will Hall, ancestry, south, my ancestry to south? And now you see this collective rainbow coalition on indigenous land, leading the greatest African city in the world. So people can introduce, raise questions, but the question really is, what's our goal? What is our goal? And my goal is to build a better, stronger, safer Chicago. And we're doing just that.
Hi Mayor.
Hey.
Got a couple of questions that are actually kind of clarifications on things you've already addressed, but I'm not quite clear on them. The first is going back to the sanctuary city referendum. We heard a lot of debate on it on the floor today, and Ray Lopez and others saying, "You're basically throwing fluff referendums out there for things you should already be doing, like flood mitigation on the west side." So why push out these other referendums just to shove out debate over the sanctuary city referendum?
You're coming to a conclusion that is not based on anything other than speculation.
I'm asking a question about what is transpiring in the city council and what seems like a maneuver by your administration. Can you address that?
I am addressing it. You are coming to a conclusion that is based on speculation. I never said I was shoving anything out. Did I get up and say I'm shoving something out? That's a conclusion that you're basing off of something that just doesn't exist.
Well, there's only three referendums that can go on there, we know that. And if you put three up yourself, that means there's not room for a fourth. So, I mean, call it what you will, semantics however you want, but it seems clear that you are going to put these other referendums out.
Aren't you glad that we don't have to base on anything on what seems to be? Aren't you glad? So look, when you govern, you don't govern on what seems to be. You just don't. Did you have another question?
Did. Alderman Riley said his information coming to him is that you have had members of your administration go through the Museum of Broadcast Industry or History building and are seriously considering moving ahead with that as a migrant shelter. He says, "With the end of Chicago being such a problematic area in his ward." He's very concerned about that. So first of all, yes or no, have you had part of your team go and look at that facility specifically? And are you seriously considering that or not?
So we have looked at a variety of locations all over the city of Chicago. You know, Alderman Riley's speculation around this particular site, I don't know how he's coming to that conclusion. Thank you.
Hi Mayor, a WBZ and Sun Times investigation found that at least nine CPD officers who are listed on Oath Keepers rosters are still in the police force. Do you still stand by your campaign pledge to fire all Oath Keepers and Proud Boys? And if so, how do you plan to do so?
So we're working with Superintendent Snelling, you know, as well as an adequate process to not only assess the information that has been bestowed, but to make sure that we are being thoughtful about our presentation. And so I'm going to continue to be thoughtful. And look, you know, individuals who openly subscribe to an ideology that is hateful and harmful have no business serving, certainly not protecting.
And do you think CPD can be trusted to continue to investigate these officers? Or do you support the Inspector General reopening of the investigation?
Superintendent Snelling is a very fine individual. If I didn't trust him, I wouldn't have appointed him. In fact, a unanimous vote on the city council floor said we trust Superintendent Snelling. I'll take it one step further. Just had a chance to talk with the commander of the 10th district. And you all are aware of the mass shooting that took place in the 24th ward. The community stepped up. The community stepped up, and it helped lead to identifying this individual. To me, that's an indication that there is trust being restored, because that's what I'm doing as a leader. We're working hard to bring people to the table so that we can actually build systems of care, but you can't build systems of care without trust. And so it's going to take all of us to be competent, compassionate, and collaborative, and that's the type of leadership that we have with our police superintendent.
Good afternoon, Mayor. What can you say to people in a number of communities who are saying there's a lack of transparency as far as where migrant shelters are going to go? Not so much that they're not told, but that they're not told until after decisions have been made and that, to quote one of the alders today, that it's too late.
Yeah, well, there have been multiple committee meetings on my committee that Andre Vasquez has held. Multiple committee meetings. We have weekly briefings, every week. We had a briefing back in September, it was September 8th, September 9th, all of you reported on it. And so what I said to the alders during the briefing is what I've said to you all, that I'm assessing every single site. Look, we have a national crisis right now, an international crisis, where people are living on floors in police stations. We also have a national crisis where black communities have been ignored across this country. And so all of that, I'm absorbing at one time. I'm glad that I was raising a family of tough people, because we can handle it. The good thing about being in Chicago is that, under an enormous amount of pressure, we don't flinch, we don't buckle under pressure. And I've asked every single alder, and there are two alders that are here, I said, "Find me a couple of locations." Both of them have worked. In fact, the largest potential site is in Segcho Lopez's ward, 2,500 people at capacity. People are doing their homework. I don't assign homework all the time. I'm not that type of instructor. But when I do assign it, I do expect folks to do something. And what I also said was, and remember, because you all reported on it, that we're going to set up base camps, and we're going to assess sites all over the city. No one is caught off guard or by surprise, no one. And as we continue to assess, there are individuals, of course, that wished we had more time, but we live in Chicago. We got to get people out of police stations. People cannot sleep outside. They can't be on the floors at airports. So we're going to continue to deliver the message emphatically and transparently. In fact, I think this came up earlier about favored staffing. I told you all it was a bad contract, that's why I renegotiated three times. Remember the $51 million that we appropriated? I told you all that $47 million was going to our staffing, and I said, "That's a jacked-up deal." See, look, when you come from a large family, you don't have to hide, because all my business was out there all the time anyways. So I apply the same principle as Mayor of the City of Chicago. We talk to people, and we give people assignments, and people can either do the assignment or not. I expect them to do it, but what I can tell you emphatically, I'm going to do mine. I always turn my homework in.
Hi, Sophia Tureen with Associated Press. Another question about that letter that was sent to President Biden today. So it was, you know, you and four other mayors, and some of those cities have been sending migrants to Chicago, namely Denver. I know your predecessor was angry about that and sent a letter to the governor of Colorado. Have you had communications with those other mayors, asking them to stop that practice? And what does that do to Chicago's burden?
Well, look, I've had conversations with a lot of mayors. In fact, you know, two alders here were in Texas, talking to mayors in Texas. And I want to thank both Alderman Haw and Segcho Lopez for your leadership and stepping up to do that. And what they found is that there is frustration all over the country. But here's the thing, though, here's why this situation, quite frankly, is so jacked-up. For some of these bordering mayors, they're moving a half a million people through their respective cities annually, thousands a week. But here's what's interesting. They have the full force of the federal government to help them do that. The federal government is spending money to send people to Chicago. I'm not going to pit mayors against one another. Now, look, we're coming together tomorrow, because that's what I do, I bring people together. And we're going to be in DC together. Now, what I also want to note is that the country of Mexico, they're dealing with it as well. Because once they touch, these asylum seekers hit Mexico, they are protected by international law. And they start off at the southern tip of Mexico, by the time they get to the northern portion of Mexico, at the border of the United States of America, 2,500 people amassed to almost 10,000. So you have mayors across the country that are struggling with this international crises. And we need the federal government to do more, and that's why we're going to be together on tomorrow. And Chicago, just know that, as frustrating as this is right now, your brother's working hard every single day. International policy, local ordinances, and everything else in between. I've only missed a couple of soccer games this year so far, so my kids will be voting for me as Dad of the Year once again. Thank you.
Hi Mayor, could you give us an idea of what is actually next for 115th and Halsted after today's delay? Can or will a potential base camp move forward there without council authorization of the actual land sale?
So we're going to continue to work with alders, because here's the thing. The land sale, just want to make sure that provides some context, is for the future development of Morgan Park. I still want that. I made a commitment to invest in black Chicago, and I'm still committed to doing that. And so this is a great location for the type of development that this particular region of the city of Chicago deserves. I mean, it's been darn near naked for a generation now. So I understand the frustration that people have. I get that frustration. I come out of the organizing background. I know what it's like when schools are closed, mental health clinics are shut down. That's why I'm opening up mental health clinics. So we're going to continue to have conversations with alders around how we can make sure that this land sale sets us up for the type of development that needs to take place. Now, as far as the migrant base camps, we're going to continue to assess this site like we're assessing other sites. Thank you.
And what's the latest on the 38th and California site?
Still assessing. So I think this was raised before. We, there are, there are a lot of environmental dynamics in the city of Chicago that have gone unaddressed for a very long time. You know, sometimes my wife asks me, she's like, "What is it like being mayor?" I said, "It's like an HGTV special." You ever watch different shows like Property Brothers? You've watched Property Brothers? And you know how you acquire a particular property? And then it looks like this is great potential? And then you knock down a wall, and then you notice and you discover that there are dynamics that have been unaddressed? That's what Chicago is like right now. That we have this incredible edifice, but so many of our neighborhoods have been neglected that there are environmental concerns. And so I have to do my due diligence to make sure that the environmental space is palatable for such a site to exist. Thank you for that question, though.
Good afternoon, Mayor.
Hey.
You said in September that you had a goal of moving all migrants out of police stations by winter. Now that winter is on our doorstep, do you think you might have underestimated how difficult that feat would be? And what do you think the biggest hurdle has been?
Yeah, that's a fair question. Thank you, Alice, for that. It snowed, but winter is not here yet. And so my goal is still to make sure that we have base camps before winter. As far as the hurdle, look, the federal government and the state have to do more. The people of Chicago, we have been incredibly resilient and patient. And clearly, that patience is running short. And so that's why, you know, our two alders have gone to the border, and I'm going to be in DC. And look, I'm grateful that President Biden has lifted, has eased the sanctions. Remember when I brought that to you all, too? So I'm glad that he's listening. And we need more. And so there are some dynamics in the city, as I said before, because they've been, we've been neglected for so long, the environmental concerns that we have, and our deputy mayor, Beatrice Ponce de Leon, can attest to this, that the brick and mortar that has been neglected for so long. Some of the closed schools, we've assessed, right, Beatrice? Some of them were required $12 to $15 million just to get them restored. What we do with them, I mean, we could still have substantive conversations about that. But just like we said a decade ago that it was a bad idea to do it, now I inherited what we said would happen a decade ago. So there are a variety of hurdles, but, you know, we're moving through them, though. I mean, you know, I'm not, I'm not tired. I'm up for it. Still ride my bike eight miles a day. So, you know, those international policies that we have to address, the local dynamics of neglect, the fact that the negligence has caused the type of frustration and pain that our people are suffering through, those are hurdles. And we... And we just continue to adjust as we go along.
What is your new deadline of when to move all the migrants out?
The deadline hasn't changed, it's before winter. We, look, so here's the thing, I don't want to use a football analogy, but just bear with me, though. So there's something called a hurry up offense, where you have to get to the line of scrimmage fast, because it's a two-minute drill before the half of the game is going to end. There's a difference between being in a hurry and being in a rush. If you're in a rush, you can knock stuff over, you can miss stuff. But we do have to hurry up, because the clock is ticking. It is. So I'm moving as fast as I can while also adjusting to those hurdles, environmental, international policy, local dynamics, investments that we have made a commitment to providing for the people of Chicago. And we're doing it gracefully. Don't we look so fine up here? We do. We're okay. Thank you.
Mayor, hi. I don't want to misquote you, but from the other questions today about the Museum of Broadcast, it does seem as if it is in the mix. Can I, can we just say yes or no?
I don't know why it seems that way. I've...
Because you didn't say no.
Did I say it was?
Well, we're, that's, that is, therein lies, you know? What's the definition of is?
I know, right? Thank God I'm not the president of the United States, I don't have to answer that question. I mean, I think we know the definition of is and is not is. Look, we have looked through a variety of, of, of property all over the city of Chicago as well as land. And we will continue to assess property and land that can help us address this international crisis that I inherited. The federal government and the state government has to do more. We're, we're, we're burdening, burdening the people of Chicago in a way that is becoming quite heavy. And so I understand the frustration, and that's why I'm going to be in DC tomorrow to continue to push for more investment so that we can deal with this international crisis in a dignified way without ignoring the very people who have been waiting for critical investments for, for a generation now.
So in your hope of building this better, stronger, safer Chicago, why are you so unavailable to the press? It's been three weeks since we've been able to ask you questions.
Well, I mean, I think, that's a good question. I appreciate it. Here's another way, though, that I think about it. And just bear with me. I make myself available to the people of Chicago. And I believe there are multiple ways to engage the public, one of which is through press conferences. And I understand that there's a need to have this type of space. And I'm in the neighborhoods every day. I'm talking to people every day, whether it's in person, virtually, by phone. And, and look, I, I have come to appreciate the role and the position of mayor, because I get to talk to people every day. And I'm going to continue to do that. Now, as far as a cadence that could be satisfactory for this particular mode of engagement, you know, I understand, I do. Just like there are people who want to see me in the community more, you know, people always say, you know, "Mayor Johnson, we know you're busy, but can you come over here?" You know, "Mayor Johnson, I know you're busy, but can you come over here?" Or, "Mayor Johnson, I know you've already been here, but can you come back here?" And so over these last five months, I, I really wish, though, quite frankly, that the people of Chicago can see the city of Chicago through the lens of a mayor. It's a fascinating place. Tremendous people, great neighborhoods. And so I just, I, I want this space to know that as someone who comes out of the organizing movement, that simply relying upon press conferences alone doesn't meet the entire need of how the people of Chicago want to engage with the mayor of Chicago. And here's the thing, I love it. I really do. I do. As hard as it has been at times, I love it. It's, it's the best job one could ever have outside of teaching middle school, which, by the way, there's no better job to prepare you to become mayor of Chicago than teaching middle school in Chicago. So I appreciate the question and I appreciate the desire for the people of Chicago to want to see me as much as they possibly can, and that's why my schedule looks, looks the way it looks. And I'm going to continue to do that. I want to touch point with people every single day, because that's who I am as mayor. To be accessible, to be available. Think about it, you all. I go from teaching middle school to an organizer to becoming mayor of Chicago with no political lineage. It is one of the most improbable dynamics probably we've seen in, in a generation. And so I say that with a great deal of humility, but I do recognize that the people of Chicago deserve to see their mayor in the neighborhoods, and that's why I'm in the neighborhoods.
Hi Mayor. I guess I'm back in cleanup today. The inspector general's report identified an officer who made threats to kill a former romantic partner and their family, but the police department declined to fire that officer despite the inspector general's recommendation. Will you ask Superintendent Larry Snelling to take another look at that case? And should the department take a stronger approach to officers who are accused of domestic violence and threats against intimate partners?
I really appreciate that question. You know, let me just acknowledge, first of all, that, you know, maintaining and growing community trust with the police department and the neighborhood, we have to do that. And in instances like this, it, it, it disrupts that potential. And we have to take a look at all of these different, all of these threats, as well as the, the toll and the stress that our police officers are enduring every single day. Look, I'm not making excuses for bad behavior. And so we have to take a closer look at these threats, absolutely. Because we have to maintain and build and grow community trust. And in some communities, we just have to, like, create trust, because it doesn't even exist. You know, and, you know, I just want to note, this is why, you know, we need treatment and not trauma. We do, for everybody. Because we're all impacted by it. And I'm going to continue to make sure that we push to ensure that the, that the sanctity of life is protected and maintained. Are there other questions here? All right, well done today, you all. Sorry for being so late. Thanks for being so patient with me.